The Commissioner in charge of the thermostat needs to take his seat. Good evening. This is the Planning and Zoning Commission for the municipality of Anchorage. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Park, do you have any disclosures?
to the tape, so I will have to remove myself during that hearing.
Ms. Dean, you're excused from case 2014-0219. Please reclude yourself at the appropriate time.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Robinson, do you have any disclosures? Thank you. Mr. Walker?
No.
Mr. Strike?
No disclosures.
Thank you. Mr. Cange?
None for me.
And Mr. Spring?
I have none.
That should be it.
The Chair-
And I have none as well.
The Chair has a disclosure on case 2014-0063, which is on the consent agenda. Every Christmas, as part of downtown Rotary, I ring the bell for the Salvation Army. I don't think it impacts my ability to make a fair decision on that case. Mr. Walker, would you please handle the consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Okay.
Are there any items-
Mr. Robinson, do you wish to remove anything from the consent agenda?
Yes, sir, I would like to remove D for a time extension on case 2014-0063.
Okay, I don't believe it's a time ex-
Time extension slash expedited.
Okay, that's correct. Thank you. Anyone want to pull anything else from the consent agenda? Seeing on that, we'll vote on the rest of the consent agenda, cases D1A through D1E. We have a motion from Mr. Walker that's not on the machine. We need a second. We've got a motion second. Please use your machines on the remaining items. Okay, that has passed. Mr. Robinson, would you care to speak to your polling of case 2014-0063, the Salvation Army case?
If I may, Mr. Chick, and I don't know if this is working or not, but-
Audience, can you hear him?
Speak loudly.
Speak loudly.
I simply would like to ask for a staff report on this case, please.
Thank you. Staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Robinson, the use of an outpatient treatment center or outpatient clinic in the PLI zoning district is a conditional use in both the old code and the new code. The Booth Memorial Home, which is located in that area of Anchorage, that is northwest of the intersection of Northern Lights and Burgrow Street, where there's a lot of social service agencies in that area, the Booth Memorial Home is located in that area and used to be a residential treatment center. It was established in the 60s and has a de facto, or had a de facto, conditional use. That treatment center closed sometime in the past year, and the Salvation Army was looking to make- they submitted for a change of use permit to change the use of the home from residential treatment center to outpatient clinic, and their representative was unaware of the zoning requirement for the conditional use until they were at the building permit, going through the building permit process. So, this came to the attention of the Planning Director and some others, and it was agreed that this request would be fast-tracked to the Planning and Zoning Commission so that the Salvation Army could continue to operate their outpatient treatment, which is a very important facility that they operate for the community, and thus it is before you at this time. Amendments to conditional uses do go on the consent agenda. That is normal. And I would point out that a representative from the Salvation Army is in the audience. Thank you.
Mr. Robinson?
Thank you. That's on, yeah?
Yeah.
Couple of questions for staff first, and I think might be appropriate to bring up the petitioner representative, but could you just explain to the commission what a de facto conditional use is, for starters?
It would be a use that was established legally at the time it was established, and then later on, there were zoning requirements, a code change that made that use. If you were to establish that use new, it would require a conditional use approval. So, it's kind of like non-conforming rights for a conditional use, that because they were legally established before the requirement to get a conditional use, they are considered to have a conditional use even though they never came through the process.
So, there's a minor conditional use amendment. Could you explain to us what minor means and what would in fact constitute a major conditional use amendment, and whether or not a major conditional use amendment would require a public hearing whereas a minor would not?
approval of conditional uses is 2115-030G, and it states modification of final approval. The authority that approved a conditional use or site plan may, upon application by the petitioner, modify the conditional use or site plan when changed conditions cause the conditional use or site plan no longer to conform to the standards for its approval or to implement a different development or operational plan conforming to the standards for its approval. Upon the filing of an application for a modification of a conditional use, and after a review of that application, determine that it is complete and meets the requirements of this title, the department staff shall place the requested modification on the consent agenda of either the Planning and Zoning Commission or the Assembly, as the case may be, for approval, denial, further action, public hearing, and thereafter, action by the respective body. So, the code language doesn't really say anything about minor or major. The agenda section has a listing, as from what you pulled it off the consent agenda, as minor conditional use amendments. I think it's been kind of historically normal for the department to make some sort of determination whether a change is really just basically a new conditional use or a modification, which is then considered minor and placed on the consent agenda in accordance with what I just read to you. In this particular situation, the determination that this was an amendment to an existing conditional use was made by the Community Development Director.
And if I may, and the change to the conditional use has, as I understand it, nothing to do with the site, but has to do with the operations, or could you describe the changes and what those changes are? I believe it's operational as well as potentially something else related to internal of the building?
My understanding is limited to the letter in page three of your packet. I don't believe there are any changes to the site, but I recommend you direct that question to the applicant.
But there was the application of building permit which prompted this here. So, there's some sort of change to building. Is that right?
I think they came in for a change of use, and there were some issues raised by the fire department with regards to their fire alarm and sprinkler system. Again, I think the applicant can speak more directly to those. There also seems to be a parking issue that needs to be resolved based on the use, the new use versus the old use.
And I, before, and we're going to get to the, I think, petitioner in a second, but I'm trying to understand, so the de facto conditional use was for a residential treatment center.
That's correct.
What is before us today is not a residential treatment center, is an outpatient treatment center effectively.
Clinic, yes.
Clinic. And there have been amendments to the conditional use between that de facto conditional use and now that have recognized a different use along the way, or has it been operating as a residential treatment center from the de facto point up until this point?
My understanding is that it was operating as a residential treatment facility from the 60s up until approximately a year ago. The amendments added additional, or an additional use onto the site. There was an adult daycare, although I didn't have enough time to do the research to determine whether that was actually, where on the site that actually was. But my understanding is that it's been a residential treatment facility the whole time.
Thank you. I don't have any other questions for staff at this point.
Okay. Ms. Dean, is your questions for staff or the applicant?
Through the Chair. My question is, there was a conditional use in 96, there was amendment in 98, and then in 2005, a minor amendment. Are they in compliance with all three of those? Is there any issues outstanding at any of those?
Ms. Dean, the 96 conditional use for the, that was for the adult daycare. I haven't frankly had time to do any investigation, so I don't know the answer to that.
Staff, the letter's dated May 19th. I assume that's when you got the letter and got started. Is that approximately correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Is the applicant here? Would you come forward and state your name for the record, please?
My name is Sherri McWhorter, M-C-W-H-O-R-T-E-R.
We normally, if this was a public hearing, we would ask for response, where this is not a public hearing, so we'll take, you know, take questions from the commission.
Okay.
If you will, please. Mr. Robinson, first?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Major McWhorter, just trying to understand what the application is for, so perhaps in your own words, if you could kind of explain the uses that have gone on, what the change of use is, what the change of clientele is. I think it would be helpful for us to understand.
Okay, the parcel, we call it a campus, is about five acres, and there's three buildings on it. And the building that we're talking about changing, the use in, is the one that was started in the 60s, in 1996. It's the octagonal, weird-looking one with legs sticking out.
Good, good architectural description. Appreciate that.
Yes, I went to school for many years to learn that.
Thank you.
That has always been, up until recently, a residential treatment center for adolescents. At one time, it was boys and girls, and then ultimately was girls only. It also had an outpatient component, and at one time, there was a day treatment program there as well. So, there used to be about 40 kids in there. In 1996, there was a change to use another piece of the land that's on the northwest side for the adult day center, which I believe opened in 98. And then in 1990, in 2005, we had another program called the Cares for Kids Program, which was placed there for a short period of time, which is for children who've been taken away from their parents by the authorities, and they stayed with us until they could find a foster care placement. So, that amendment allowed for those children. They were from birth to age 12. The treatment center was for kids 12 to 18, until their 18th birthday. We had a high school also on the grounds at that time. When the Cares for Kids Program closed first, and then the residential treatment program closed, and we continued to have the adult day center, we continued to have outpatient services in the small building that was built in 98 on the other side of the property. Those programs both continue as they have been, the Alzheimer's Treatment Program, and then the small building, we call it, had, used to be called the Admin Building, has outpatient services for families who either have their children in foster care and they come to us for supervised visitation, or for families who are trying to avoid having their children taken away. So, family reunification, family preservation services there. So, when the big building became empty, it is desirable for us to move outpatient services for adults in there because we were renting a property for almost $11,000. for adults in there because we were renting a property for almost $11,000 a month. This is our own facility. It's on Mental Health Trust land, but it has to be used for Mental Health Trust beneficiaries. So the people there that will be going there now are adults who come for individual counseling and for group counseling in small numbers. There will never be more than, I would say, a maximum of 25 there, even when we have groups. In the daytime, which is when the other two programs are operating, it's outpatient individual only, and rarely do we have more than four clients at a time. I don't know when we ever would, since we only have two counselors.
All righty. Mr. Robinson, do you have anything further?
I do. So the staff report says that the Salvation Army is planning to move its outpatient treatment from the Clithero Center to the Booth Memorial Home. Is that what's going on here? The services, the outpatient, so describe, Clithero had both inpatient and outpatient services?
Right. Outpatient residential service is out at Point Warren's Off. We have a 42-bed treatment center for people with severe substance abuse and mental health disorders. This program is for those people who may have graduated from ours or another program or who have not been determined to be in need of the intensity of services of residential. So they come to us for a time period that could vary from a month to six months, and intensity from once every two or three weeks to two or three times a week.
And did they come to you voluntarily always?
The ones that outpatient are not always voluntary. They, we take referrals from the Federal Bureau of Probation and Pretrial Services, and some of them are DOC graduates who still have a parole to work out. But they, we don't take sex offenders or people with violent offenses or arson.
So part of what we're trying to do here today, I think, is, you know, catch something that would have been a little more thorough and understand, I think, from the neighborhood standpoint, what the change of use or change of clientele is. In your words, how would you just describe to a neighbor, since we don't have really any opportunity for neighborhood comment, either written or otherwise, that what you are offering here today is really no different from a neighborhood impact than what you had done previously at this site?
Well, if you've ever had a teenager, you know that it's probably more impact to have young people, adolescents there than adults who have already reached a level of stability in their care. So really, it's not a whole lot different than your neighborhood doctor's office, where people come and see a doctor and go away again. They, if there are any problems ever, they tend to happen away from us because they're well behaved when they're in front of their counselor who can report to their PO if they have one.
Do you know how most of the clientele comes and goes to the site?
Almost all of them ride the bus. We have a few who ride bicycles in the summertime. We've even had one or two who walk. It is very rare that any of them have a car.
And during the hours of operation, is bus service still adequate to and from the site?
Yeah, the buses go along Northern Lights and Braga, so they have to walk about a block, but it's easily accessible by bus.
And what is the actual change in the building that prompted building services to kind of identify that there's a conditional use? What are you actually planning to do physically?
We're not doing anything physically. I think the reason this came up the way it did was, there was actually a fire in the wall when the building was unoccupied. And when, then we wanted to reoccupy it, the fire inspector came in and said that the fire alarm did not work, but with the change to a B as opposed to a whatever it was, institutional residential, we didn't need it. So we had to take it out. And that's the only expense that we've had, the only thing that we've done, other than paint a couple of rooms.
Great. Thank you. I'll defer to others at this point, Mr. Chair.
Anyone else have any further questions? I've got a couple of questions. Is my understanding correct, staff, that we do not have a site plan or a completed application right now?
That's correct.
Do we don't know right now what fire and traffic conditions will be?
That is correct.
And we don't know, or do we, we don't have any correspondence from the landowner giving the applicant authority to act in their behalf?
That is correct.
The Mental Health Trust Authority is represented here tonight.
Okay. That helps, okay. Could you step up to the mic? Your typing's good, too. State your name and your position with the Mental Health Land Trust.
Thank you. For the record, my name's Nancy Burke. I'm Senior Program Officer at the Alaska Mental Health Trust Authority.
Do you have knowledge on this piece of property involved?
I do. We just received the request today to support it written, in a written form, and were unable to do that for today's meeting, but I wanted to come support the application.
Do you know of any reason at this date that the Mental Health Land Trust could not support this?
I don't, no, I don't.
Okay.
In fact, I'm a little confused as to why it's even up, but...
I think that makes about 47 of us right now, but we're trying to butter our way through. Mr. Spring, who is your question for?
Staff, I believe. Just to follow up kind of on what you were talking about, Mr. Chair. We're all aware of what the new HUD result has been in their review of the Title 21 and the requirement to go back and hire a consultant to review the Title 21 requirements for handicapped, including alcohol dependency issues. It seems to me that this case, once that's resolved, might fall under that area. And assuming that I can foresee the future, there might be some changes to the ordinance that would require a conditional use for this type of use involving outpatient services for alcoholics.
Through the chair, Mr. Spring. HUD was focused on residential uses. They were particularly focused on the use assisted living and the use habilitative care. And the concern, their allegation was that housing for people with disabilities had to climb over a higher bar than housing for people without disabilities. Considering that this is an outpatient clinic, you know, similar to a doctor's office, and is no longer a residential use, I do not think that the changes that could potentially be proposed for the code based on the conciliation agreement that the municipality and HUD have signed will have any impact on this.
Thank you. Ms. Barker?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A question for staff to further clarify on that question, that is, if they were coming in here for regular fee-for-service, privately-run counseling, chiropractor's office, medical office, would it be a permitted use?
Through the chair, Ms. Barker. If they were coming in for that sort of use in the PLI district, it would be a conditional use.
Thank you.
I love these, that, and number one, I think staff has done the correct point, Ms. McConnell. I think the director did the correct item to expedite it. I think staff has done a good job on the time they had, but these are sure difficult to try to resolve at this level. Normally, I would reject one that you don't have an application, you don't have a letter from the owner, and we don't have anything from fire and traffic, you know, so we're sort of kind of between a rock and a hard spot. I wish there was somebody who could duck it past this odd two up above us. What is the wish of the body? Mr. Spring?
I'd like to move for approval of the conditional use to amend the de facto conditional use, to change the use from residential treatment center to a health service inpatient clinic.
Anything further said?
I agree with your summary in that they were put in the difficult situation. I think this is, clearly has minimum impact. I equate it to this kind of AA meeting, which happens all over the place in this town, and nobody bothers to, has any problems with that. It's people coming together, meeting a counselor, talking about their problems, and leaving. And I see absolutely no impact on the neighborhood with this use.
I'll give the neighbors your phone number when they call me. Mr. Spohies?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I echo Commissioner Spring's thoughts. I don't think that you're going to see a brunt impact with this new use, and that's why I'm supporting him.
My concern is, I don't know what leverage we give staff to ensure that these, the steps of a completed application with a site plan, taking care of fire and traffic. I mean, all I can say is, I'm certain that sooner or later, you'll appear before this board again, and this board has a memory, and there are some issues here that must be resolved. And I think you go away with that thought, and that we still need a letter from the Mental Health Land Trust. I mean, we can take care of the problem tonight, but there are some issues that must be resolved to keep this piece of property functioning as it is intended. Mr. Robinson?
So a question for staff. What will be the basis of the use definition and site plan that will be the baseline to know if any changes occur in the future?
Through the chair, Mr. Robinson. The basis would be the May 19th letter provided by Major McWhorter.
So no actual site plan that eventually gets turned into traffic or anything? It would just be the previously approved site plan and that letter that would constitute the approval of the conditional use?
It's my understanding through the building permit process that the, there may not be enough parking provided, so that will need to be resolved, and there may be a site plan provided with the resolution of that issue. So it's possible that a site plan could get filed with the building permit, but I don't know whether that will happen.
So if this were to change back into a residential facility in the future, that would constitute an additional minor amendment to this conditional use? So in other words, we would be acknowledging that, or would just kind of any of those uses go moving forward?
Well, Mr. Spring didn't clarify whether he included the recommended conditions in the staff report on page two, but the condition number two does clarify that the conditional use for residential treatment services is terminated. So should, in the future, the owner or an operator desire to reestablish residential inpatient or residential treatment services, that would be a change.
Thank you.
Mr. Spring, would you like to clarify your motion?
I'd be glad to. Thank you, staff, for bringing that up. Yes, I would like to include, as part of the approval, the recommendations, four recommendations that the department's listed under page two.
Thank you. Is that acceptable to you, Mr. Spohies?
It is, assumed. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Strike?
Yes, I was going to follow up on that same topic and ensure that the four conditions were also met, but in listening to staff, I now have a new concern. I keep hearing the word "may" or "could" regarding some of the additional terms and conditions of the use. I think it's time to be definitive. What's going to be required? And definitive is, in the staff report here, the change of use permit will not be issued until these issues are resolved, yet we, I believe, we need to list those exact issues and amend that, those four conditions to include that statement with the issues identified. I don't think it's clear. I guess that's a question here to our team here.
Question to Mr. Spring. Would you specify the additional conditions, then, that your issues that you're listing?
Well, as noted, the fire plan review has requested additional information. We don't know what that additional information is. The, and that insufficient parking has been provided, so the traffic section will need to review plans showing additional parking.
We've submitted twice the parking plan. I have another copy. There are 70 slots.
Okay. But in our presentation here, we've got identified those change of use will not be issued until these issues are resolved, and those need to be, it's very simple. If it's resolved, great, but I think it need to be noted as exceptions.
Okay, thank you. Should I make an amendment to the...
Why don't you take the whole motion from the top down and...
I'll try. Okay. In the case of 2015-0063, amendment to de facto conditional use from a residential treatment center to a health service outpatient clinic, I move to approve with the four conditions listed by staff on page two of the staff report, and an additional condition number five, subject to resolution of the fire plan review and the request for additional information. And number six, the resolution of the traffic section's concerns, need to review parking plans showing adequate parking to meet the code.
Mr. Spohies, is that acceptable to you?
It is, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Strike, does that answer your concerns? I see no other questions in the queue. Please use your machines. That motion passes. Mr. Spring or Mr. Spohies' findings?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I think, to repeat some of what I said before, I think the Salvation Army is doing the best to fill the needs that they see and the community sees in terms of services for the handicap. In this particular case, services for persons with alcohol and drug dependencies. There's a clear need for more services like this, and I think, even though this is expedited, and I share your concern with the fact that we're being asked to review this and staff's been asked to review this without having lots of time, I think the impacts, as we could see from the testimony of the petitioner, appear to be minimal. In particular, the impact on traffic is correct, I believe, her assessment that very few people are going to drive to this facility. In fact, even if everybody drove, there'd be only 20 maximum people at one meeting, and primarily, or 25, rather, at night, and the amount of traffic during the day would be limited to the individuals who will be seeing individual counselors. 20th Avenue is a good facility. It's a collector, I believe, and there's a traffic light at Braga, and it's capable of handling this, even if it was, everybody did drive three cars, there would still be sufficient to handle the traffic, and it isn't going to be an impact on the neighborhood. I don't believe that the people who are seeking counseling for alcohol addiction, they're obviously trying to do something about the problem. I don't think they're going to be disruptive to the neighborhood as a result of this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cange.
Thank you, through the chair. I'd just like to add that I believe this project is in the best interest of the community. It's supported by, I don't want to use the word testimony, but it's supported by statements from the petitioner and staff, and I tend, well...
Thank you, Mr. Spohies and Ms. Barker.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I echo Mr. Spring and Mr. Cange's thoughts, and I don't know if there's anything further I can add, and it was very helpful to have the owner here to testify.
Thank you. Ms. Barker?
At risk of piling on, find that the subject property is... At risk of piling on, find that the subject property is in the middle of a larger human services campus in that area, which has had a variety of kind of shifts and changes over the years, and the specific flavor of the particular services that are offered at these various facilities. Therefore, it's not unreasonable that this use should flex also as the times have changed, and to keep these valuable facilities continuing to serve the community.
Thank you. I would like to say, one, as part of the findings, I think that the director's efforts and staff's efforts on this case were spot on. We appreciate their efforts in bringing it forward. Our issues that we raised regarding the quality of the application were not directed at staff. I think the applicant needs to make sure that their professionals get the information and follow the procedures. It would make all of our job easier. I don't see anybody else in the queue. That completes that one. The next case before us is case 2014-0219, a request to rezone approximately 72.66 acres. It's submitted by Big Country Enterprises LLC on that. Before we get to that, this is not a public hearing on this, so I'm going to skip most of the public hearing language I would read, but I will go to read the part, "An individual may have appeal rights relating to any action the Planning and Zoning Commission takes, except Commission's recommendations to the Assembly which are not appealable. Appeals must be filed with the clerk's office within 20 days after approval by the Planning and Zoning Commission of the resolution, which is the Commission's final decision. A fee for the appeal is required at the time of the filing." We have had a public hearing on this case. We've had the staff report on this case. I guess I would ask, what's the wish of the body at this point? And may the record show that Ms. Dean has properly reclused herself also. Mr. Walker?
Can we get an updated staff report? So, I think we had requested some, we were waiting on some additional information, and I see we've got a better copy of the site plan showing some of the wet areas and the streams and that kind of thing. Can we just get an update on where you guys stand at this point?
That was a question for staff.
Oh, I thought, Mr. Chair, you were going to say, yes, we can have an updated report.
Would you please answer the commissioner's question? I'm sorry.
Okay. Yes, at the conclusion of the public hearing on August 6th, the wetlands report and the soils investigation were given to the chair. That was passed on to the staff, and that was reproduced, and it was, there was a short report given to the commission along with a reproduction of the both reports that were submitted on August 6th. The commission did not have time, of course, at that August 6th meeting to do any review because they were large reports. But basically, the conclusion of the soils report is that the soils were impermeable, and Onsite Services did have, was the only agency that did return comments on the soils report, and did comment that several things that they want to see, they want to see first a nitrate study in addition to an aquifer study. They are concerned with the dry channels. They want more information on the dry channels. There was testimony heard at that time, during the public hearing, that the soils were very wet through the years, that this might be a particularly dry summer, spring. And Onsite Services did point out that any Onsite septic systems would have to be 100 feet from any surface waters. And the Garnett's report did find that some five lots may have to have advanced soil septic systems, and Onsite Services basically said the same thing, that there was, and there was a high water table, so that there were some significant concerns in both the, in the soils investigation. And basically, there was a revised preliminary plat that was included in the submittal that was forwarded to the commission members, which did differ quite a bit from the first preliminary plat draft that they had seen for the August 6th public hearing. But there are still 32 lots that are being proposed with the preliminary plat. And so, basically, and there are, instead of one long collector, there are now two cul-de-sacs being proposed, as well as a long proposed collector street that extends from Upper D'Armen over to Canyon Road, yeah, Canyon Road. Thank you.
Do you think, Mr. Walker? You had mentioned nitrates earlier, but you did not mention nitrates, so we got no information on nitrates.
There are elevated, Mr. Chair, there are elevated nitrates in the wells in the surrounding area. Those lots are smaller, and they're served with holding tanks adjacent to this subdivision. And Onsite Services was concerned about elevated nitrates, and so they basically wanted to get, based on the source aquifers for domestic supply on page three, "Based on nitrate levels in neighboring wells, the source aquifer for new wells serving the proposed subdivision will be required to have a nitrate study in addition to the standard subdivision aquifer study," and those were comments from the Onsite Services section. "The study results may indicate nitrate-reducing septic systems should be required for the subdivision."
Thank you very much. Anyone else have any questions?
Do you know, was there a correlation with the wells that did have elevated levels of nitrates? Was there a correlation between elevated nitrate levels and well depth? It's my understanding there are various, some wells out there are quite deep, and some are somewhat shallow, actually?
I was not aware of any correlation through my conversations with Onsite Services staff. The, there was quite a bit of testimony about the availability of water, and that some of the wells were deep because that's how deep they had to go to get water at a reliable gallons per minute. And there was another written comment that they had very good water pressure at a much shallower level than 500 feet. I think that in the past, when I was dealing a lot with Onsite Services in staff to the Plating Board, there was a study done on the hillside that there was elevated nitrates throughout the hillside, and the source of the elevated nitrates were the Onsite septic systems. I don't have any other further details other than that. It is known that there, at that time, there was elevated nitrates in the well water on the hillside.
I have a follow-up question, Mr. Chair. So, just to recap, earlier you said there is, they've only proposed five lots to have advanced septic systems, and the remainder of the lots would have a traditional trench?
Mr. Chair, Mr. Walker, that five lots was the recommend, was the, what Mr. Garnett's company, Garnett Engineering Limited, said that they would have to have advanced systems. However, Onsite Services, because there are elevated nitrates in the surrounding area, basically stated, felt that there might have to be advanced systems on many of the lots that might be required in order to keep the, to have better control of the nitrates and protect the aquifer source for the wells within the subdivision.
Thank you.
Any further questions from staff, or from the commission? Is there a representative from Mr. Garnett, from Garnett Engineering here?
Yeah.
Would you come forward, please? Bring a copy of your report with you.
Fortunately, I brought my glasses.
Now, I had this figured out about a week ago, and now I've got to sit here and try to see if I can remember it myself. Would you turn to test hole seven on the commissioner's 148, page 148? And also, please give us your name and spell it for the record, please.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, my name is Jeff Garnett.
We've got Garnett. We've got it. We can figure that out.
Okay.
Thank you.
Test hole number seven. I'm looking at it.
Okay. Now, if I read this thing right, you took your readings every five minutes, right?
We took them every 30 minutes. On the perk test, you mean?
Yeah, on the clock time. Okay, every 30 minutes. I'll buy that.
Okay.
And so, if it dropped a half an inch in 30 minutes, the perk rate would be 60 minutes per inch. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Let's go to test hole 2A on page 142. Now, that dropped an eighth of an inch in 30 minutes.
Yes.
I don't believe that equates to 120 minutes per inch.
No, it doesn't. The symbol in front of it means greater than, so it's just saying it's some number greater than that.
Okay. Is that what you're saying?
Yes, sir.
Is that the same also on test hole three on page 143 that doesn't have the symbol?
Yeah, and that one, we just put 240 plus, but...
All righty. An awful lot of these are awfully small numbers. I mean, you're, some of these are 1/16 of an inch, and then down there in the bottom, you say our readings are plus or minus 1/16 of an inch.
Well, our readings are within 1/16 of an inch. It's actually the municipal requirement that we measure to the closest 1/16 of an inch in all these perk test readings.
Okay. But you also say, like, on test hole six, page 145, percolation readings are within 1/16 of an inch.
We mean to the closest 1/16, yeah. So, we're not splitting it down to 30 seconds on the reading. It's 30 seconds of...
1/16, you dig a hole, how big is your hole you dig?
A 6-inch diameter hole is what we're looking down.
Okay, then you fill it up with water, and then you lay a straight edge across the top, and you measure at the start of the time, and you let it go down, and you measure the bottom of the time.
You're hired.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. Yeah, that's what we do. But typically, you've got to watch it real close, and you've got to bounce it. You just watch that tape tap the water, because when you're at 1/16 of an inch, you don't have a lot of room to measure around, but we know it's difficult to get any tighter than that, so that's what the municipal standard is.
Okay. Awfully, awfully tough soil when you're working with a 1/16 of an inch on a perk test.
Yeah, anymore, this is what most, well, I shouldn't say most. We deal with a lot of this anymore. This is what's left in Anchorage.
I understand the problem, but I'm trying to work a solution here. Does anybody else have a question for Mr. Garnett? Saying none, thank you very much, sir.
You're welcome.
I have no one else in the queue, so what's the wish of the body on case 2014-0219? Mr. Walker, you wish to speak? You're not making a motion?
Well, I mean, I figure there might as well be some discussion. I'm sure, it seems like everyone else is as conflicted as I am. I mean, I think it's possible to develop this density in these soils, and worse potentially, but is it appropriate here? I don't, I don't know. Should we go to the committee of the whole, or is there anything to even discuss?
We, to go to the committee of the whole, we need a motion. Mr. Cange may help you out there. Mr. Cange?
Thank you. Through the chair, with regard to case 2014-0219, request to rezone approximately 72.66 acres from R. 8 to R. 6. I move to approve this request.
Okay, I got a question for staff, and that's the way you worded that. Ms. McConnell, the staff recommendation is a denial. Motions are supposedly made in the approval, or made in the positive, so I would interpret his motion as supporting the denial of the motion. Is that a reasonable interpretation?
No, Mr. Chair, that would be an incorrect interpretation. If the body, Mr. Cange made a correct motion to recommend approval or approve, and if the body wishes to go with staff, they would vote no.
Okay. Thank you very much for clarifying that. Okay. Mr. Cange, do you have anything to say on your motion, or do you?
I'd definitely like to speak to my motion. Again, I made it in a positive motion. Candidly, I'm conflicted in this one because I've been in development most of my life. I agree with Mr. Walker's statement that this can be done. All the soils are iffy. I feel that there is a need for more housing in Anchorage, but I don't tend to support my motion. I believe that development doesn't need to happen on this particular site with this particular zoning, given the fact of the soils and the tests that we've received, given the fact that the Onsite Services comments recommend that, you know, some of these lots won't be able to have septic systems on them. So, again, I don't tend to support my motion.
We have a motion. We have a second by Mr. Robinson. Do you care to speak to the second?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I don't have anything further to add, but I also will not be supporting the motion.
Thank you very much. Mr. Spring?
I won't be supporting the motion either. I think we, most of us at least, have been here long enough to remember the housing study that was done a year and a half ago. And the housing study, I mean, I agree that there is a need for housing in this community, but if you believe the housing study results, it showed that we have an oversupply of large lot zoning for single family. What we don't have is enough small lot with sewer and water. And so, I don't, if I was convinced that, yeah, there's a dire need for more large lot, large lots for single-family housing on the hillside, I'd say, yeah, we should do it. And, but in this case, I don't see it. The, with respect to the comprehensive plan, the Hillside District Plan, which is the guiding, I guess, document in this case, doesn't really say that, based on the land use map, that this is inconsistent, but it does say that you shall not rezone any property use map, that this is inconsistent, but it does say that you shall not rezone any property in the hillside. I'm not sure if I follow that, or if I agree with that necessarily, but it is in the plan, and that is the justification, I think, for the—the staff to say that it isn't consistent with the Hillside Plan. And just from a general point of view—I might go on a little bit more—I don't think this is really, you know, good urban planning. I don't think it necessarily is good to expand the low-density sprawl in the community through the hillside. I think we need more compact development and concentrated near Employment Center, like the comp plan says, to add more housing in the hillside, when it's clearly a risk involved, particularly with respect to the groundwater and—and the—the flow into Rabbit Creek, and also the—what I would consider to be a substandard street, which is just strip-paved and no—no shoulders whatsoever or sidewalks. I just don't think it's the right—the right proposal in—in the pla—in this particular place.
Thank you very much. Mr. Robinson?
Thank you. I—I wanted to add a couple of things. One—one is, I—I think it's important that the decision in this case doesn't reflect my belief that a property owner ought to have the right to bring forward a plan that they think has a—a—a marketability behind it. I—I think just because we need more urban housing doesn't mean we ought not to have more rural housing. I—I think the issue that I had was, um, you know, we have an area where, in fact, we—there are lots that are the same size as what was—what is being petitioned for, but those lots preclude sort of—come before current—current zoning. And I think that if we were to rethink that at this time, as—as testimony proved out, there are some problems with some of those smaller lots. And so I think what we're, in fact, saying is, with the R8 zoning, you're less likely to create problems in fragile environments, and I think it's the most—the most appropriate zoning for the—for the particular area.
Anybody have any further comments to make? Saying, hearing none, please use your machines. That motion is failed. The next mo—the next, um—
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
Would you mind explaining what that meant for the audience?
Can we put our signs down? Yeah. That says that the—the application has—has failed and will not go forward. Well, it could—it is appealable. Okay.
If I may, Mr. Chair, the—the Assembly is the ultimate approver of rezonings, and so they can either choose to stop here, or they can take this petition forward, either as-is or with changes to the Assembly for approval. That's—that's their choosing. The record will be reflected on what we voted on and what our findings were here this evening.
Thank you for raising the question, Ms. McConnell. What? Oh, okay, explain that to him. What? Okay, uh, Ms. McConnell, will you invite Ms. Dean to come back and join us? And then would you grab a packet—one of the next—for the next subject? Or Tom, somebody would—I apparently left my packet at home. Thank you, I got one. Let's take a—we'll take a five-minute recess. I hate to interrupt the 4H meeting taking place up here regarding GOCHES. We will now take up case 2015-0049. The public hearing is closed on this case. We were handed out—a handout—a very, very short, two- or three-minute staff report, if you want.
Mr. Chair, I would like to point out a few things. I guess I—I'd like to talk a little bit about, very briefly, about this ordinance that's before you tonight, as compared to the Hall Dembowski ordinance, which you will be taking up next week. There is conflict in the district-specific standards for the R4 and the R4A between the There is conflict in the private open space requirement between the two. But that's—that's the significant conflict. I know it's a little bit confusing to be, um, looking at a bunch of amendments to design standards, and then next week, look at an ordinance where the design standards get suspended for a year and a half, but those things are not necessarily incompatible, that the amended design standards would be then placed on hold and—and—and then would take effect January 1st, 2017, presuming the Assembly accepts the evaluation of their compatibility with the comprehensive plan. So—so I know that's kind of, I think, thrown some people a little bit for a loop, but—but with regards to the—the residential design standards, those things are not incompatible. What Mr. Davis handed out was, in response to a comment we got at the work session that we had with, I think, six of you last week, and it's a little bit more of an explanation of floor-area ratio, just—we pulled out our illustration that is in the code in Chapter 6, and then Mr. Davis examined three existing developments and two proposed developments with as much information as we had about the proposed developments to be able to evaluate this, and to—to show you how they would fare under the code as adopted. You may note that one of the proposed amendments in the ordinance before you tonight would take the FAR by right from 1 to 1.5, which would make a particular difference for the Northwood Apartments, which is number three, in that they would not have to earn any bonus FAR, because they come in at 1.4, thus under the 1.5. For the other examples, uh, well, the Sunbeam Apartments are under 1, but for number 1 and number 4, and potentially, while it's unclear about number 5, but at least for number 1 and number 4, it would reduce the amount of—should the amendment pass, it would reduce the amount of FAR bonus that they would have to provide. The staff report for the Hall Dembowski ordinance is not in your packet tonight, because it is not finished. We've had very little time to analyze this ordinance, and so that'll be to you in the next day or two. It was your suggestion, Mr. Chair, that instead of having our directors' meeting on Thursday, we turn it into a work session on the Hall Dembowski ordinance, and that would be fine. That's scheduled for 11:30 on Thursday at the permit center because of the construction here at the library.
I—I plan to take that one up at the conclusion of—
My apologies.
—of this, on that. Does, um, anybody have any questions for staff before we take up this case? Mr. Walker, then Mr. Robinson?
So, um, I—I don't have it in front of me, but I think I pointed this out during the last session, and I wasn't—I wish I could have made the work session, because I would have liked to have asked this question then, but, um, so there was an example, uh, there were several examples much like this packet, which I thought was great, and the one that you provided last time as well, that showed—I didn't bring that, unfortunately, with me today, but showed examples of other projects and how they would fit into the design standards, and one of those examples was something I kind of made a point about, which is—it looks like a Lee Baker site condo. It's absolutely hideous, completely disgusting, and yet it passes the design standards with flying colors. And so I guess my question is, why have the design standards, if that's the case? Or, you know, to even go a step further, I know this Sunbeam project pretty well, too. I, um, you know, that's another fine example of really awful development, and, you know, no architecture, right? I mean, it's a gigantic box covered in vinyl, and there was zero thought put into it. So if we're not preventing those kinds of things, why do we have design standards? And I'm not trying to be—I'm not trying to be sarcastic here, I mean, I'm really asking that question, so.
Uh, yes, uh, through the chair, in response to your question, I think you're referring to, uh, in your first example, example number nine in the building articulation menu packet, and we have extras of those that I can get for you if—you don't have yours. Do you have that packet?
I'm—I'm okay. I—I—I—I mean, I know what we're talking about.
Okay. So, uh, that packet is 36 tests specifically of the building articulation menu, and that's one of approximately 12 sections in the, uh, in the residential multifamily design standards as recommended to be amended. And the purpose of these tests of the building articulation is to show how that menu works once it's amended, that that front facade, that front facade of that building passes, still leaves the other sections of the residential design standards, which would come into play here, and we're aware of at least several which this development would not meet. But this test is primarily to show that a variety of developments at a variety of price points have available to them enough menu choices to pass the building articulation menu in a variety of ways. And there are developments in here among the 36 building articulation tests that do not pass. Among them is your other example, Sunbeam. Sunbeam would not pass, the building articulation. Brookshire, your first example, for example, would not pass some of the landscaping requirements and—and open space requirements, for example. Uh, there’re other requirements as well. Thank you.
If I could also make a comment on that? There's certainly an element to design standards that is based on personal preference. We've tried to follow the guidance of the comprehensive plan, and also to address issues that—that seem to relate to functionality as well, and I think Mr. Spring made a comment at the last meeting—I think it was Mr. Spring, it might have been Mr. Strike—that most of the ones that pass seemed to be good, and most of the ones that didn't pass—or maybe it was you, Mr. Walker, most of the ones that didn't pass seemed to be bad. There was the occasional one that seemed to be bad that passed, but I—I think it's pretty impossible to create measurable standards—well, I should say it the other way. I think you can always take measurable standards and make something bad, but I think more often you end up with benefits to the development.
Thank you. Mr. Robinson?
Thank you. I'd first like to concur with—with Ms. McConnell to say that if it's voted on to postpone, and—and again, it's not our vote, it'd be the Assembly's vote, to—to sort of set aside the design standards, that—it—that does not get us off the hook, because that's not what that proposed ordinance does. It doesn't propose to do away with them, and so at some point or the other, we're—we're long past due getting busy on making these changes. Part of that responsibility rests with us, some of it rests with staff, some of it rests with the Assembly Subcommittee. You know, we—we—we started meeting back on multifamily design standards in—in—in August of last year, and I—and my company has designed two projects to the new code and—and discovered many of the issues, but that won't help us on those particular projects. So, that said, I—I, um, I'm willing to sort of dig in. What I'm not willing to do is go into the townhouse articulation standards, for example. You know, I—I mentioned at the work session that I—we need to—that—that is—that is perhaps one of the most complicated, and perhaps, um, perhaps, as Mr. Walker suggested, perhaps one of the most unnecessary requirements, but at the—the—the point is, I don't understand the changes until someone walks me through it, and I don't know that I'm ready to do that here tonight. If—if we want to hold everything until we have public hearing and hear the other ordinance, and somehow combine the two and act upon them, I would wager that that would be somewhat complicated, but—but doable. But that said, I would—I would be willing to try to work section by section on the sections that we did receive work session information on, and staff—and—and staff's walked us through.
Thank you very much. Mr. Walker?
Through the chair, Mr. Chair, I'd like to ask Commissioner Robinson a question, if I may. As a someone—or as your organization, I think, has been the victim in the past of the building articulation standards, I—I hope I'm stating that correctly, and since I wasn't at the—the work session, I'm—you know, I'm working a little bit handicapped here, but what I—I guess what I'd like to ask is—so what you just said, I think, is that's probably the section you're least comfortable with. Obviously, you've been bitten by that in the past, and—and I'm aware of that issue. So do we need to try to split this thing into tiny little pieces and attack it, or—
Go ahead, Mr. Robinson, and then we'll—
I—I don't know, and I don't want to say that—that we've been victimized. We have been the—the perhaps voluntary guinea pig to the design guidelines. I mean, we volunteered and knowingly did that, and I think in the process uncovered things that, in our opinion, worked and didn't work. I think our issue still is, some of the things that we feel didn't work have not been fully recognized by staff, maybe because by changing them, they also allow other types of development to—to—to move forward that—that we're trying to prevent. But I—I—I think the only way to do it—even if we were to go through this, I don't believe that you would just, uh, take the entire section and vote yea or nay. You would go into Committee of the Whole, you would work through section to section, you would identify whether there were amendments to those particular sections, agree what sections are kind of going forward in chunks, come out of the Committee of the Whole, vote on those sections, make the amendments as appropriate, and move on. So I think that's how you would tackle this, and maybe the chair and—and Ms. Dean, having worked through this process many times over, might reflect on that. I—I will say that the—one of the things that I'm struggling with is—is having to read this amendments with the actual code side by side to see how it fits in—in the whole, you know? I mean, that is, you're looking at one section, and you kind of have to have both together, and—and that's just the nature of the beast, but it's—it's, you know, in a perfect world, I'd see it all in—in kind of what was going to be at the end of the day, not just the sec—you know, the particular section.
Mr. Cange?
Thank you. Through the chair, you know, I—I—I agree with Tyler, and I think, you know, I was at that work session, and—and granted, I—I wasn't as prepared as I would have liked to have been for that work session, but I would still rather go into it Thursday and work out some of these things, section by section, as opposed to deliberating it here tonight, particularly since we've got this other amendment coming up. There are a couple of sections that we could tackle tonight, and—and again, I—I agree with Tyler, that we go piece by piece, but I—I do think that it's probably best suited to iron some of these things out, otherwise we'll—we're spinning our wheels, to a certain degree, to—to get to a little bit of the meat instead of the—the bulk of the issue.
Is that a motion, Mr. Cange?
So, would I move to table this, 2015-049? So moved.
I—I stepped on Mr. Spring, he came off, and he came back on. Uh, I will give Mr. Spring the opportunity to—to speak before we come back to your motion, Mr. Cange.
Well, I could—I could—I could speak to the motion when it's seconded, if you want.
Okay. Okay, we've got a motion, we need a second, we've got a second. Okay. Mr. Cange, you spoke to your motion, you care to say anything else right now? Ms. Barker?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I—I agree with Mr. Cange. I think we need a lot more, um, a lot more kind of off-the-dais time to grapple with this, and also really understand the substance of the—the other ordinance that is before us for consideration.
Okay. Mr. Spring?
Well, I wouldn't—I'm not going to support the motion. I think—we'll be sorry if we don't tackle some of this tonight, because I think— I think we'll be sorry if we don't tackle some of this tonight, because I think this, Appendix C is going to be really, really difficult, and to try to do it all in one night is going to be very, we'll be sorry. And I think if, it will work if we go through the sections, all except for Appendix C, which is the design, multi-use design standard with the menu system, and go over those sections that we dealt with at the last work session. I'm ready to talk about each one of them now and make a vote. The only caveat I would have is, if there's something that comes up, a section that is in conflict, like staff said, there's some conflict, minor conflicts in R4, R4A, and open space, I'd like to be aware of what those are as we go through them so we can, you know, kind of assess whether or not it makes, affects our vote or not.
June 8th meeting currently has three public hearings. One, a monopole, one, an R4 district conditional use, and the other one being the Hall Dombowski ordinance on that, on that. And then, July 1, or July 6 has a conditional use natural resource and amend Title 21 window applications on buildings under construction, which I don't understand, but I'm certain we'll get educated on that. We have a motion by Mr. Cange, oh, pardon me, Ms. McConnell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Robinson mentioned how long we've been discussing these amendment, or discussing the, that there are problems with the multifamily standards and, you know, the staff. I think lots of people recognize that staffing issues at the department have made us slower addressing some of these issues than we might otherwise have liked. I would like to let you know that we have two projects, multifamily projects, coming forward using the new code. They, at least one of them, they expect to turn in their major site planner view application on July 1, and I will have trouble telling them how they should design their, to what standards they should design their project because of these two ordinances. So, at a risk of sounding a little hypocritical, we do urge you to not delay more than is absolutely necessary in addressing both of these ordinances. Thank you.
Mr. Robinson?
So, just a question. If someone submits on July 1, but this doesn't get through the Assembly until September 15, what's the code that they're designing to?
They have to design to the code that's in effect when they submit, but also, as you know, there are some potential significant changes, such as, you know, changing a window here or there may not be that big a deal, but the whole issue of accessory storage, that's a significant issue, and I'm sure that they would like to know what the commission thinks about that and see that it's scheduled for the Assembly, you know, as they're working on their design issues, but they need to submit to the code in place at their time of application.
Mr. Cange has a motion. Would you care to restate your motion, Mr. Cange? Or, yeah, just remind everybody what your motion was?
Is it to date, sir? Well, I guess when I made my motion, we didn't have a date, and we were going to look at that, and so you started going through the calendar. Again, my concern is if we, because there's some, some things in here where we got presented at a work session, and I didn't really have time to think about it and provide comment...
I'm not arguing with your motion. I'm just trying to, rather than...
So, I guess I defer to the chair. I mean, is there a time where we can get this on and then...
Well, what the chair, Chair talked to Ms. McConnell today. We've got a director's luncheon on Thursday. We probably don't need a director's luncheon. We had one two weeks ago or less, and my suggestion was to take up the Hall Dombowski, whatever, Dombowski Hall ordinance.
So, if you guys want to take this up tonight, I mean, I can, we'll sit here, vote no on my motion, and let's go forward.
Well, I...
I'm not, it's not going to hurt my feelings.
No, I'm not. I'm just...
I'm okay to sit here and go through this tonight. I, again, if we want to take up the Hall Dombowski deal Thursday, that's fine. I mean, we could sit here, it's not going to hurt my feelings if you guys want to move forward and talk about this tonight at all.
Ms. Barker?
I think my concern is that we didn't even touch Exhibit C during the work session, and it is by far the most complicated piece of this consideration.
Well, that doesn't mean we can't discuss other points tonight, or we can, we can wait, but we have to decide one way or the other way, and the easiest way is to, send Mr. Cange to the wall and use him as the straw dog?
Mr. Chair, I call the question. The motion's been first and seconded. I call for the question.
Okay. All in favor of postponing until after our work session on Thursday? That has carried. It has been postponed until after our work session on Thursday. We will go there. That completes our agenda. Mr. Spring has volunteered to serve on the budget, or not, the workforce advisory, work budget, well, Ms. McConnell, help me on the name. What do we call?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, I wasn't listening.
Budget Finance Work Committee. Mr. Spring has volunteered, and Mr. Strike has volunteered to be an alternate to that, so we have those done, and that completes our meeting.
Yes. Okay. Uh-huh. I fought my fight. If we win, we win. If we don't, we don't, you know? I no longer go home and cry.
Keep your stuff far.
Keep your stuff, yeah, find it, please. Mr. Spores?
Motion adjourned, seconded by Ms. Walker.
All right. Change Mr. Walker's title to Dairyman, please, in future. Mr. Walker, Mr. Robinson?
What did I do?
The Dairyman.
Oh, yeah.